Well, welcome to our guests and I know we're gonna get to you folks very soon. So we'll look forward to hearing your names and letting you hear ours. Right now, do we have comments from the public on any items that aren't on the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any board acknowledgements this evening?
I was just gonna say, there are countless ways that our kids, our kids meaning the Essex Town kids, have been so active in just, it's been several weeks since the last time we met. And to even try and name some of them would be almost impossible, but just that I, every time I see pictures in the paper, stories that, you know, involve our kids, I just get very excited. So I'm just thrilled at what our kids are doing.
Rachel and I attended Saturday, the get-together in memory of Emily Tile's husband. We heard a lot of stories. There were approximately 250 people there. There was a lot of representation, especially from the elementary school, but tremendous show of force.
Thank you. And I'll just add that, of course, we express our deepest sympathies to Emily and her family. And I appreciate that you folks were able to go, and I know many people were, for that sad loss. And are we on to, now Mark has on here that we are going to assign a meeting process observer. And I'm thinking that since we haven't really provided you with the tools or anybody to do that, that I'm gonna take full responsibility for that not happening tonight. We will review how we feel the meeting went at the end of the meeting in our old style, without a particular tool to use for that. And then when we do our retreat this summer, we're gonna talk about that process. And we're gonna come with a few tools for us to choose from. And then that will become a disciplined part of our process to set up a schedule for who wants to take that on. So it rotates and with a more critical eye to how our meeting process is going. So, thank you for the reminder, Mark.
I think she's gonna say an aisle.
And I'm gonna give.
I thought it was going under.
I thought, no, I will just take responsibility for us not being formal in that, but that we will do our process at the end of the meeting. And in the absence of a tool to manage our process with any different kind of discipline, we might as well go with what's been working, or not. But let's do that casually at the end of the meeting. All right, we are on to the consent agenda. And do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
I have a question. The dollar figure for the auditor's report, is that for one year or multiple?
One year.
Thank you.
Well, the figure that you saw is for a three-year contract. Is that where you're speaking?
Yeah, the fifty, which other thousand?
Yeah, that's over three years.
That's three years. That looks better to me.
Good question.
I know, that struck me as.
And you were very calm when I said one year. They're really good at what they do.
We're in the wrong business. Okay, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you. And we will have an item to be signed for the anticipation note. That all of us have done that before.
And it shouldn't be too intimidating. It's only 2.28 million dollars, so here you go, you can sign it here.
And this is a net positive effect in that the interest that we get on, isn't that interesting? That almost never happens in anything in this world right now, so. I know. I'm not sure it would work with the balance. I'd be able to provide.
There are three places assigned.
We used to do about fifty of those things, and Chittenden Bank came in, gave us each a pen, so we wouldn't run out of ink to do it.
Nice. Pens, but we do a better job on the interest rate, I think, than, I'm okay with that instead of a pen. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark, who will hopefully lead us through this next really exciting part of our meeting.
Yeah, it's exciting. Thanks, Kim. And we've positioned ourselves tonight as a board to hear from our guests tonight. We have several people speaking on their learning journey here at the elementary school, at the Founders and at EMS, but also at the high school. We've got some kids coming in, some ninth graders, we hope, at some point. So this is the last, the last board meeting of the school year. And once again, it's been a pleasure to serve the community as a superintendent and to serve the board. And just to recognize, in addition to students and parents here this evening, we have our three principals in attendance who will also be speaking. Ellen Thompson, who will be helping with the presentation. Bonnie Sarkowski, who is Director of Food Nutrition Services, so thanks for coming. This is probably the most exciting, I think, night only because it's the last board meeting of the year. Because we're gonna be talking about something really important, and that is the investment we make as taxpayers in Essex. This is the night about what's the benefit. And I think you'll hear tonight some of the great learning that's been happening through the voices of students. And just to set the context for this panel, the distinguished panel of graduating third graders, Ms. Savio's classroom, and Melanie Savio is here, of course, as well. I was approached one probably six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, by this, the whole class. And they had a, they had an opinion about our child nutrition food program. And they wanted me to review some pieces of writing that they had done that were aligned with, guess what, the Common Core. I'm not gonna quiz you, but how many anchor standards are there in the Common Core in literacy? There are ten. And one of them has to do with argumentative writing. And for third graders, it really is about an opinion. And not just based on emotion, but based on real evidence that supports their claim that this is the direction that we should be taking. And I won't, I won't share the news in terms of what they were, what their opinions were on. I think that they will do that quite aptly. But I was really moved by the experience because through the voices of students and their excellent writing, I was convinced that what they had to share was something I had to pay attention to as a superintendent. And I like the board, I think that the board will be impressed as well. But what's grown out of that is my recognition that it's way more than just about the writing. Through Melody's great teaching and unit design, it includes a number of other facets to our content, curriculum content that I think you'll be impressed by. And it's not about them just speaking about the writings, it's about their experience along the way in a number of different areas. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Savio and these marvelous third grade students, who have left all sorts of things outside of school to be with you tonight.
Thank you for allowing us to come share with you the work that we've done. So this, this unit began as a writing unit. And as Mark said, it was opinion writing. And it morphed into so much more than that when we decided to brainstorm something that we were passionate about because we know that effective writing is a result of caring deeply about something. And so the students, I think, will do a much better job than I telling you about our journey. I do want to just point out that this is, this is not just writing. It's, it goes along with the college and career readiness, text types and purposes, knowing your audience and being able to support claims. The distribution of writing, we did some multimedia presentations, posters. We have a little slideshow to share with you, as well as letter writing. So, does someone want to be, tell us, tell them how we began this process? What were we talking about? Were we talking about persuasive writing or opinion writing?
Mommy, I hate to interrupt, but is it okay if they just introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You get to see our names. And we'll just remember yours.
Sure.
I'm Ashley Clark.
I'm Julian Bruins.
I'm Ashley Jornander.
Chris.
Thank you, all of you, very much.
So we began the unit talking about the need to find something we cared passionately about. And we brainstormed a number of ideas. And what did we finally fall upon?
Salad bar.
What about the salad bar?
That'd be great for our school.
It would be great for our school. And why do we, why, what did we do next?
We asked questions.
We did. We formulated some questions that we wanted answers to.
Didn't we also talk to Mr. Marinelli about what he does if we have like extra scraps?
Yes. So we formulated some questions. We did some research. And part of that research included, go ahead, tell them what you just said.
We talked to Mr. Marinelli about what we should do about our opinions of what may happen if like with scraps of food, he always makes them into fresh soups, so.
Can we tell them who Mr. Marinelli is? Yes, Ash.
He's the food service director at Milton Elementary School.
And why did we call him?
Because they have a salad bar there.
Yes. So we used technology. We couldn't get on the bus and go to Milton, so we Skyped with Mr. Marinelli. And the students formulated questions. And he provided some background and gave us some ideas about where to go to next, which led us to some research on the internet. And Ashley, gee, do you wanna share? I think it's in your letter, the website that you found really.
If you love to play, they give us grants on like what we need to get.
And so part of, of opinion writing is anticipating an argument, right? And we did that pretty well, I think. We, we said, "You might think it's expensive, but..."
We may use it on some of our plants that we, we, sometimes we take care of plants and then we then sell them, so it could come from there a little bit.
The cost of the salad bar? What about students wasting food? What if we don't sell all the vegetables? What could we do with that?
We make a, you could make a soup out of it.
Mr. Marinelli says they make lots of soup. So, Chris, do you have anything to add? How about if you just read your letter that you wrote to Mr. Andrews, Ashley? You don't want to?
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Dear Mr. Andrews, I am writing to you about getting a salad bar. I think a salad bar would be great for our school. Kids in this school will have less of a chance of getting childhood obesity if they have the opportunity to eat healthy food. You may say that there is not enough room in the cafeteria, but there is such thing as movable salad bars. Healthy kids have less absenteeism. Students who are healthy are sick less often and miss less school. Some people may think that there is too much prep work. But Milton Town School District Food Service Director Steve Marinelli says that you build a good team. I would appreciate a salad bar in our school. Respectfully, Julian Bruins.
Dear Mr. Andrews, my name is Ashley. I am from Savio Superstars. I am writing to you about having a salad bar at FMS. Our class has been researching the health benefits of a salad bar. I believe FMS should have a salad bar. I, our class interviewed Mr. Steve Marinelli, the food service director at Milton Elementary School. There they have a salad bar and they serve 1,500 people per day. You may think kids won't eat vegetables, but here's their chance. We can have a taste test and serve the foods that are best loved. A salad bar will make kids more available for learning opportunities. You, you also may think that a salad bar is too much money. At Milton Elementary School, they used a website called Feel Like To Play, and they were able to get a grant to buy the salad bar. I would appreciate if you would consider having a salad bar at SMS. Sincerely, Ashley Jornander.
Dear Mr. Andrews, I am writing to you about a salad bar at FMS. Our class believes FMS needs a salad bar because students that are healthier get sick less and that lowers absentees in the schools. This will produce more knowledge for students, according to research. You might say that it's a waste of food, but at Milton Elementary School, they hardly waste anything. In fact, they make soup out of their leftover vegetables. Research also says that students that eat healthier decrease childhood obesity. You also might say that it may be too much prep work. But we believe that parents can volunteer to prepare the food. As you can see, a salad bar would be very appreciated at FMS. Sincerely, Chris.
So that is a sampling of our writing. We had many more letters to Mr. Andrews. And we then surveyed our school community. And we have some results that we are going to quickly share. Mark, did you close the, yeah?
Yeah. Promise.
Does anyone wanna share anything?
All of the, I thought it was really impressive the way you anticipated the argument against having a salad bar. And you've written down, you've researched it, I can tell. And you've, and I think you've addressed all the big ones that usually come up, cost, prep time, kids like not wanting vegetables. I'm wondering, you talked about food testing. What, can you talk a little bit about what that, or taste testing, what would that be like? Like making kids eat broccoli?
We could like have like a vegetable like that kids like have to try, like a different one every day.
Okay. Do you have a sense of what types of vegetables kids like and what they don't like, generally speaking? No? Because I was in the lunch line today, and one of our servers said, "Mr. Andrews, you'd like some peas." And I said, "No, you can give it to the kid next to me." And the kid looked and said, "I don't want any more peas." So I don't know if it's peas or lime and beans, but you think in general, kids like vegetables?
Yes, but I don't think really peas, because sometimes kids don't really like peas, but.
I wonder why that is. They look so good, too.
I only like inside of peas in summer, but yeah.
I've gotten curious, Noah, asparagus would grow alike. Would the kid at the end have about 150 servings of asparagus meat?
I think, I think the more they eat the vegetables, the more they get to know the taste, and the more they.
There was a story on the national media outlet today about a man who just passed away, and he was 111 years old. He was the oldest living man in the world. And his niece said that he ate lots of vegetables. So I wonder if it's not only reducing obesity, but also may add to, you know, a longer life and a healthier life, you know, if he eats more of that, maybe.
And so out of you four, do you feel like you would love to have a salad bar? This is your opinion. Absolutely, absolutely. Do you eat a lot of salad at home? Some of you do, some not.
Well, usually on Thursdays, we have salad with our pasta, so I like to get that every day.
What would be the first vegetable you guys would suggest they try on the salad bar?
Carrots.
Carrots. That's great. A lot of kids like that.
My brother, he, he doesn't like cooked carrots, so that's why he doesn't really like the cooked carrots, so.
Put on a salad bar, they'd be fresh.
So, here is the result of our survey. We had 209.
Ninety-nine.
299 responses. And you can see that it was an overwhelming yes, we would like a salad bar. So, we have a little video, however, I am not able to find it, so I will email it. The video? Not. I'll just email it on the board. So, so thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. Well, thank you. And I also, I believe that, you know, Ms. Sarkowski's in the audience, and I thought you've also spoken with her as the Director of our Child Nutrition Program. And we've had some conversations, Ms. Sarkowski and I. And I think, have we, what do we think about this, this notion of a salad bar? And Ms. Irving as well, do you?
We are programmed, the staff here at Founders and myself, all support having a salad bar at Founders.
So your writing, your research, your, your opinions were so powerful that it really convinced me as a superintendent that this is a really wise investment. And in fact, starting next year on August 27th or thereabouts, there will be a salad bar at Founder's Memorial School. Just goes to show that your voice and your opinions mean so much to us as students. And even as eight, nine-year-olds, what you have to say is very important. So thanks to you and your classmates, Ms. Savio and Ms. Sarkowski and Ms. Irving for doing a great piece, a great job here. And to moms and dads, thanks so much.
Thank you. And I just wanna share this wonderful writing with all of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good night, thank you. Well, I sent an email to you earlier that there's been a bit of a challenge with our high school data for probably lots of good reasons. And so, as evidenced by the hour of the night, and so I'm gonna move into another piece of data because I'm not sure if we're gonna have panel members, unless you saw some high school kids come in that I didn't see come in.
They didn't?
No. We were expecting two had confirmed out of five, and as of last Friday, it was, it was a go, so.
Are we ahead of schedule?
No, we're pretty much on schedule. So, but I can, I can flip it a little bit and just keep going. So, I don't know if you had a chance to see my email today, but it has been a bit of a challenge this year in terms of just trying to lock some things in. And, and again, there's, there's reasons for that, that are all, all good reasons. What we did this year, Judy DeNove and I co-introduced a survey that we created at this end for ninth graders to take. And it was given to them, ah, here we go. Hi.
Hi.
You here?
Yes.
Hi. Mr. Andrews, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Thanks so much for coming. Let's see, is Bethany gonna be here?
Uh, I think so.
Okay. Great. Well, have a seat. We're gonna talk quickly about one other piece, and then we'll introduce you.
Oh, okay.
So the long and the short of it is, the survey that was administered several weeks ago, there was only 28 responses from Essex Middle School students. And I didn't feel that was a large enough N side to really have a discussion around what it means to us. So we're not gonna give up on the idea. I still think it's a good strategy in terms of getting from, from graduating ninth graders their readiness for high school, their high school experience, as relates to the N's policies 1.2, 1.4. So what we did this year is basically take the attributes of lifelong learning that are part of our K-8 report card, and frame them in, build them into a Google survey. And I've got copies for the board. Again, I wasn't gonna make a formal presentation, but I wanted you at least to see what it meant for the 28 kids who responded. And I've got copies for, for you guys as well. I'm gonna pause and move right into a different. Hi, Bethany. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming. I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. We were actually about ready to review some data that your ninth grade peers, I don't know if you had a chance to take the survey that Mr. Riordan administered. And we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that after we visit with you a little bit this evening. So thanks for coming. I hope you wanna introduce ourselves as students and then maybe the board.
I'm Kiara Zimrenow.
I'm Bethany Connick.
Kim Gleason.
Dan House.
H. O. Preston.
Dave Klauff.
Thank you, Beth. I know you've got finals, so thank you for taking time. Busy time of year.
Thanks a lot for coming. And so this is a really important conversation. It's one, it's one of several presentations tonight for the board to hear about your readiness for your experience as ninth graders. And as I said in my email, I'm sorry we didn't have a chance to connect. It was just a busy last few weeks for all of us. As important as is to be ready for the academic rigor that exists at the high school, as importantly is, where are those sort of attributes and skills that, that young people need to have to navigate what it means to operate in a high school? And I sent some questions for you to sort of think about. And hopefully they were sort of jogged your thinking about what you might wanna talk about tonight in terms of, you know, your hopes, your dreams, your aspirations, you know, how your experiences in Essex Town, specifically over the last three years as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, prepared you for your learning journey. And what are some things that you'd like to share with the board, who represents all of the owners of this school system, taxpayers? Things that we should think about. And you've got your, your old principal friend, Mr. Briggs, next to you, so you can take your shots at him as well. Only kidding. But just by you coming out tonight just shows your, your leadership and your commitment to making sure that what we invest in publication, on public education works for all kids. And so I really applaud your, your time, your initiative in coming out. And hopefully it's not taken away from too many important things like getting ready for finals tomorrow. So with that said, there's really no right or wrong answer. We just, maybe if you can each take five to eight minutes, and then we'll open it up for the board to ask some questions. How's that? Great.
Okay. So I actually moved here from Milton, so this was my first year in Essex Town schools. When I came here first, obviously I didn't really know much about like the school system. And it was kind of like, like a quick minute getting to know my counselor and getting my classes all set up. Because like, I had recently moved, so that was kind of like time-consuming. And then like also, you know, figuring out my system and stuff. And I think I would have definitely liked to sit down a little bit more and kind of talked about it. But for classes this year, I definitely think that, at first it was a struggle because it was different, you know, but it was, it was really good. And like I learned a lot this year. Like I feel like my habits of learning have increased, and I feel more focused. And I feel like I'm actually learning stuff. Whereas last year was kind of like, you know, just laid back. And if I had assignment, then okay, fine, whatever. But this is like more like serious and to the point, and I really appreciate that because now I feel like this is something serious and I'm taking it, you know, step at a time, so.
Your first sentence was you were in Milton last year. Just remember that.
Yeah. That is why it was definitely different for me to go here because I had heard a lot about, like good things about the school education in Essex. And so just coming here is really different. But it's great. It's a good difference, so.
So if, if, if these were school board members in the town of Milton, and there's, it's a similar governance structure, board members are overseeing the operation of schools, what would you share with this, the Milton Board in terms of your learning experience? In terms of what they might wanna think differently about preparing kids for a ninth grade experience, whether it be at Milton High School or Essex High School? Is there anything, any words of advice or?
Like to prepare for?
Yeah. I mean, you talked about the habits that you developed as a learner.
Yeah.
Is there something we could have been doing differently in your middle school experience to help cultivate that in any way?
I feel like definitely kind of cracking down on like deadlines and actually being serious about that. And like having punishments for children who are slacking. And like, I know that sometimes kids kind of like slack only because like they don't understand or they're not focused. And so I feel like if they kind of really are serious about what they're teaching, then that is something that definitely will prepare you. And also like assignments, like challenging students. I think for me, this was kind, I mean. like assignments, like challenging students, I think for me, this was kind, I mean, the classes that I took this year really weren't that challenging, but like, I really wanted to push myself as a learner anyhow, so just really like, like doing things, I guess more challenging is kind of what I really want to say, so.
Bethany, your reflections?
Well, I was, I've been here. I went to EMS, I went to Founders, I went to, you know, like Essex Elementary.
That's a long time ago.
Hasn't changed.
And I think, gosh, EMS was great. I think, I remember, don't call me stupid, I still don't know all the 50 states because we never really went over it. I wish, I remember in sixth grade very specifically, having to label every single country in Latin America and Europe and Africa, and I still didn't know our 50 states. Like, I feel like history, we didn't do until like eighth grade, and we learned about like Black History Month in like sixth grade, not sixth grade, but like first grade. I was like six years old. I learned about the slaves, I learned about Abraham Lincoln, but that was all the history we had, and I wish we had more because I love history so much, and I was really exposed to that when we learned about the Romans and the Greeks and Egyptians in middle school. I love the team, the seventh and eighth grade teams. Like, I love that, how they keep those together because I have phenomenal teachers. I was on the Galaxy team, and honestly, like that English class taught me more than I'm learning in my ninth-grade honors class right now. I see metaphors everywhere I look. Like, I loved it. I loved it. The, I think it really depends on what teacher you have, of what you learn. I feel like, I don't know if it was like this for everybody else, but in third grade, it was reading and writing with this really strong point, but it wasn't a lot of math, and then we went into fourth grade, and it was math, and it was like buckle down and do math, and the math that we did is like this connected math book, and I don't know if you guys still do that, but I hated it.
Bethany, let me just, just timeout. This is great. Just make sure we don't mention names, that's all.
Yeah, but I think that, that math.
You're okay.
That, that math was, I think it really works for people who understand math in the beginning, but if you don't get math, then that, that whole system did not work. And I know most of the, from what I know, in my eighth-grade year, I was tutored in math to get through it, and every, pretty much everyone who's doing well in that class was also being tutored to like relearn the basics. So, I feel like that's what I would change. I don't want to like totally tell you to like throw away what you're doing, but I definitely wish there was a better way to learn about algebra and things like that.
So, one of the, one of the questions I sent was, again, the academics are really important to all of us, but you're also, you strike me as being strong peer leaders, you know, you're concerned about more than just your stuff. I mean, you're probably active in other parts of school life to a degree, even as freshman?
Yeah.
And so what, how does that happen? Do you just like wake up one morning, you just want to, you know, aspire to do great in school? Was there an experience or experiences you had at either Milton or Essex Middle School, or even in elementary school that got you thinking differently about what you can bring to the table in terms of a student and trying to improve, you know, the lives of other kids, or better curriculum, or whatever it might be?
I did a perseverance piece in seventh and eighth grade, and that totally changed my outlook on everything, and I loved that. I would keep that in there. Like, every seventh and eighth grader who goes through Essex Middle School, any school, I feel like in the entire world should have this perseverance piece, because it taught you sometimes like what success is, and how sometimes you don't reach your goal, but you succeed anyway. And it really, that really changed my entire outlook.
Well, I think I was a very social person to begin with, and I think that like, I've always been kind of like curious about the world, and like I really wanted to explore and stuff, and I don't want to trash Milton, but sometimes it's just kind of slow, and even when they're not slow and they're still trying, like students, they're always kind of chaotic, so you don't really learn as much as I had wanted, so I definitely wanted to kind of like expand on that, and so. And also, like, I do a lot of finite stuff, so I do theater, and so I was very vocal, and I wasn't really like shy, so I kind of like encouraged students to kind of like, all right, guys, let's get cracking. So, I don't know, I guess kind of just developed throughout the years.
Yeah. It's interesting, some of the data that we'll talk about in a bit, one lower, and only 28 students from EMS responded, but one of the lower scores had to do with, I can persevere, I can work through difficult tasks, and less than 70% of the students who responded to the survey said that they were capable of doing that. So, I do think it's an attribute that we want to develop in young people, that work is hard, and it should be, as you're pointing out here, but I've got a responsibility to persevere and work through that, and find where I can, where I can be successful. Does the board have any questions for our two panelists this evening?
I'm just kind of, also, I'd just throw up the hypothetical question, if you were a teacher, if you were a elementary or a middle school teacher, what things would you think, oh, this is what I would really want to bring to the class, because I think those seventh and eighth graders would really benefit from a perseverance piece, obviously, you've mentioned that, which is really neat. I kind of want to know more about that. Not that we have a lot of time right now, but other things that you think, oh, we want to make sure that our seventh and eighth graders get something. I don't know what that would be that you think would be really valuable to get them ready for ninth grade or high school, for whatever. Is there anything that?
I don't know. If I was a teacher, I think that I would, well, first, like, I would want to know like all the requirements and stuff, like for what they need to learn so that they can be successful the previous year, that it's something that I should, that I would probably like kind of go over. And then, like, I don't know, I try to be creative because like, sometimes when teachers are dedicated about what they're teaching, it can be kind of boring when it's just kind of like cookie cutter stuff, just like, you know, like those books and stuff. I feel, yeah, yeah. So, it's just, I don't know. I would want to try to make it fun for the kids, but I would also be serious about it. And I would, if I was a teacher, I would want to be passionate about what I'm teaching too, because I feel like passionate teachers are the ones that kind of like excel and kind of like, are the ones that like you remember the most.
We're looking to hire a sixth-grade teacher.
I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, passionate teachers make all the difference, exactly what she said. They're the ones I learned from the most.
So, what do you aspire to be? What do you, what do you hope for? I mean, we, you've heard about the Common Core state standards, the new, the new frameworks that have come in that focus primarily on mathematics and English language arts, and English language arts, and it's about getting kids ready for careers in college and citizenship, but what are you in, as entering sophomores, as 10th graders, what are your, what do you hope for? What do you hope for when you leave Essex High School, whatever the high school is that you graduate from?
Well, I don't exactly know specifically what I want to do, but I definitely love math, and I do kind of like science, so I think I'll probably lean towards that. I was thinking about engineering actually, because like during my seventh-grade year, I, I got recommended to go to this IBM, IBM camp for engineering for girls, and that was so much fun. It was a summer camp, and it was like a week long, and you just learn about like all the things that engineers do, and it was so great. We made robots, and we made sirens, and it was just so cool. I definitely thought that that was something that I could probably do for future as a career, but, and I also really enjoy theater, and when I was younger, I thought, oh, you know, maybe I could be a big shot in being actress, but I don't really know if that's going to work out. I think that that'll probably be a hobby, and, and then I'll be something.
You're on TV now.
Yeah, that's true.
This is your audition. Guess picture.
So, probably something with math, definitely math. I'm very good with numbers and like kind of patterns and stuff, so something to do with that.
I'm the total opposite. I'm going to tell you this, and you're going to lose all your respect for me. I love writing, and I love music, and to like write songs and novels, and like be a journalist, like I want to travel. I want to do so many things. I want to teach at some point. I always thought it'd be cool to come back here, to FMS literally and teach. I thought that would be so cool.
Would you be willing to come back in 10 years and see what you turned out like compared to your private previous comments?
Any other questions from the board, or anything else you want to share?
Well, just one other question. Like, I know, you know, you hear a lot about students being very nervous, and this week is finals. How do you feel, has that been an easy transition? Do you, or do you find that that would be something that would, okay, go ahead. I see you shaking your head.
I'm a type A. As I've learned in health class, type A people create their own stressors, but I was totally unprepared for midterms and finals, and I freaked out. I mean, I remember midterms, like I'd study with my friends in the library for weeks and weeks and weeks. I was studying, studying, and I was still learning other things. So, every like time I learned something new, I'd have to add it on to this list, and I totally wildly unprepared for them. There was just so much more freedom. Like, at the end of the year, it was the end of the year, like we weren't going to do anything in that last week of school, and all throughout, like all the schools in the town district. And then I came to Essex High School, and I was like, oh, no, I have to work in June. Total opposite.
There may be only two of you, but we are getting the second, so thank you very much.
Well, I mean, I kind of signed up for basic classes anyhow, so I wasn't really too concerned about my midterms. I mean, like, midterms really crept up. I, like, we came back from break, and then all of a sudden they're like, yeah, so midterms are coming up, and you're going to sign up for your schedules. I'm like, what? What's going on? So, that was a little bit alarming. Maybe they did mention it earlier, but I probably didn't hear them, but I think that I wasn't too nervous. I'm usually not too stressed out about a lot of stuff.
No.
I'm a pretty mellow person, but, I don't know. I think that I was pretty prepared, and I knew that like if I did have troubles, then my teachers would be able to assist me and like, you know, kind of talk me through whatever I needed, and, and it's great. Like, the library is such a nice place to just kind of like hang out and actually do your work independently. Like, you, there's just, you can sit at a table all by yourself, and you'll be able to independently work and do everything, which I think is really great. So, if I ever was to stress about it, then that may go to place.
Bethany, are you feeling, after having gotten through midterms, that you're breathing a little more easily going into finals? Does your process feel different this time than it did with midterm?
Yeah, finals crept up on me, and the classes I think that I struggle with normally are the classes I freak out about. But now that I've done it once, it's better.
Well, you're here with us the night before the first round starts, so I'm, thank you very much, and you look really calm and composed to me, so I'm thinking your round two is definitely going to be smoother, honey. I can't thank you both enough. I do have just one maybe easy question. What are you most excited about taking next year, like as you're looking forward to what you're going to do with that freedom and offerings? Do you, you guys got your schedules, right? Do you have something really fun on the schedule?
Uh, not sophomore year. Unfortunately, I didn't, I, well, we signed up for our classes actually during the winter time, and so like that I kind of wasn't really thinking about. I should have like, you know, gone through the pamphlets again and like see what I wanted, because I don't really know what I want to do anyhow, so it's kind of like hard to tell, but for the most part, it's, I'm taking like just general classes, which I guess is good, but junior and senior year are the years that I'm most excited for. And actually, the high school offers these two academies, STEM and ABPA, which I both signed up for. So, I'm so excited, and so like with that, you have to continue taking those types of classes, like with the fine arts for ABPA, and then the math and science for STEM. So, those are actually classes that I'm really excited for, so that's kind of like how I'm going to wait and see juniors and senior year, how well that is going to work out, so.
And did you end up with anything fun for next year, Bethany, that you were especially excited about?
I'm taking a songwriting class, which will be interesting.
That's awesome.
And that's a hobby I have. Really excited.
You may be teaching it. I've heard you sing your own stuff, and it's beautiful, so, well. Any other questions?
This has been a lot of fun having the two of you here.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Have a nice rest of your school year.
Yes, enjoy. Good luck.
Those are just different perspectives.
Well, it was only two. We really did get a nice range of interests and styles of learning and styles of managing. I especially enjoyed the comment around perseverance. I had the opportunity to witness that with my kids in their classrooms at the middle school, but then in action, in their high school experience, in their capacity for advocating for themselves, and, you know, knowing it's okay not to know everything, and knowing the importance of asking questions, and, you know, working through challenging things. And I would echo Bethany's comment that I've seen that to be a real go-to skill that they've had to call on in their experience there, whatever they've chosen to take.
The other thing which, which you mentioned, Bethany, and it's partly, it's a lot of the work that we're doing, is that it's not okay to have this experience that's successful based on who the teacher is, and that some teachers are in elementary school, you need to be passionate about all content, not just math, just not writing, just that sort of sort of your science. So, that's, that's been the conversation over the last several years, is because we're generalists, especially at the K-5 level, that we need to be expert in all those content areas, because it's simply just not okay to, because she nailed it. If you're not passionate about what you teach, then we're not going to be engaged as learners. So, you know, making sure teachers are fully vested in the content that they're teaching and understand the content themselves before asking the teacher is the work that we're engaged in. It's sort of a good segue to the data, again, just to sort of circle back to this. You guys have a copy of it. You know, the two areas of strength out of the 28 kids from EMS, 27 from ADL, which the data are not here on ADL, the two high-ranking areas have to do with their ability, nearly 100% of the kids say that they have self-control, and nearly 100% of the kids said that they respect the rights and opinions of other people, which again, are strong attributes. The two areas that are below 70% include what we heard tonight, the ability to persevere through difficult tasks. And the second area below 70% had to do with being able to be adaptable in the change, which is one of our, you know, specific ends policy. So, again, for tonight, I don't know what to make of that. You know, Kevin and I haven't had a chance with the leadership team to really to talk about these indicators, but this is really important data to mine, and I think we'll do a better job next year. Even though we put it out a month ago, there must be another way to administer this so we can really get a good sense, in addition to these two wonderful speakers tonight, you know, what are the other, what do other kids have to say about these important attributes? I, I know, I've known Bethany for a few years. I mean, I think that she has some predispositions around learning that might be unlike other kids. I mean, I think that she's already active at the high school level in a number of, another, number, number of areas, and what we try And what we tried to do tonight, it didn't come to, to be, were panelists who have different, have had a different journey in their middle school experience. And this is the focus, this is why kids are successful, um, is our belief. That, um, it's not about how smart you are, it's your ability to, you know, to be flexible and to be adaptable, to work with people, to communicate well. And absent these attributes and skills, I think the kids are less successful at the high school level. So I really hope that we can do a better job with this next year.
Do we know, Mark? I'm thinking surveys, ideally, maybe if it happens again, they, they start to see it more than once. Maybe they're looking for it, because I think they get a higher response rate on the school climate survey. But I know that relatively as a percent of those that are eligible to take it, that's probably still pretty low too. I'm wondering if there's other data that exists and can be called out to let us know how many of the ninth graders are participating in extracurricular? And I don't know to what extent they can give you that data. And let us know.
We had some of that data in last year's report and we'll have it again in September of two thousand fourteen.
So they can provide it to us.
Co-curricular participation, types of courses kids are taking. Again, what Kevin will talk a little bit about tonight is, you know, proficiency-based assessment, proficiency test, proficiency-based testing or grades. Or, you know, we're not, we don't really know how, we're not lined up there, but you know, we, it's an area that we need to, to work harder with at high school. But tho- those indicators will be available in the fall.
It's one way around the survey, not getting the response maybe.
We do it together. This, this, for the next hour, we're doing a survey together. That's what we do in eighth grade and, and the response rate is, the kids are, 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 they're captive.
So when we're duct tape and rope, you can get all those.
But if it becomes part of, this is what we do, your voice is important, what you have to share helps thinking, helps us think about, what do we need to do differently as leaders and teachers? If it becomes part of, this is what we do, then I think it'll be more, there's be more, there'll be more value to it.
With partnering up with, I just think makes the most sense. Uh, knowing that Lori and I meet a few times a year, Rob joins us every now and then, but getting our teachers together, I think would, would add value to knowing what the results are.
I think it would also, I mean, logically also add value in, you know, kind of what Bethany was saying about making sure, no, it was, I'm sorry, it was.
Kira.
Kira, thank you, who was saying, you know, really knowing what's expected. If you know in September what's gonna be expected of you next September, then you can really focus the eighth grade. And I can imagine the more our seventh and eighth grade teachers talk to the tenth grade teachers, the more they'll be able to lay out the, here's what you need by next September. Let's make it happen.
I also think it's interesting when you listen, and we heard it last year from the panels, panelists, that, um, high school's serious. You know, like when you, when you get in the saddle, you know, it's, it's hard work. And I, 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 part of the takeaway is, for me is that I think that we expect a lot of our kids. And yet when you listen to ninth graders, it's, maybe you're not expecting, she used the word punishment, and I think we heard that last year. It's like when you're slacking off, nail us for it. But yet, I don't know, it's interesting that that's a perspective that, that they have.
And Rob, Lori and I have had this conversation numerous occasions, is, um, I think both of our middle schools, ADL and us, do a lot of wraparound services for students that we find to be struggling in the middle school years. And when you get to the high school, there's not as many services. It's a, it's a larger population. There's two thousand kids. You know, we have, uh, four hundred kids that we can wrap those services around, so it's a little bit more intimate. Uh, where there's a team of people, and we do this for a reason. We use these teams. And you, you heard Bethany talk about the power of a team in seventh and eighth grade. I think those are the benefits of that. I think you're able to, to know the quirks and the, and to work with families and to work with students on an individual basis to meet those unique needs. And I think when you get to the high school level, you're a little more, you have to be a little more persevering, perseverance. I think you have to be a little bit stronger and advocate for yourself. You talked about that with your girls. And I can imagine that's something that, that we continuously try, uh, to get to. And we do it in a, I don't want to say, it's definitely not a hand-holding way, but we do it in a way that guides.
She said, I think Bethany said that we have, I have a lot more free time and how to use my time wisely and, yeah.
Well, and I, I think too, and, and the, the feedback my kids had given, because we, they had a pretty good amount of homework. Um, maybe it has trailed off a little bit. They're pretty disciplined about how they use their time, because they're pretty busy after school. But they actually liked the every-other-day thing that happens in high school, which isn't necessarily appropriate in the middle school. But it is something that they appreciated in, because of their extracurricular schedule, to be able to look two days ahead, to get a day ahead on the weekend. I appreciate fully that that's not necessarily what everybody does and my kids don't always do it. But that cycle allowed for them to, to be disciplined in their time and use it in that way. But it could also leave itself open to, I can do that tomorrow, um, which is probably equally as likely to happen. And on any given occasion, I'm sure it's happened with my kids. So I don't wanna suggest they always do it that way. But that was something that just, they actually almost found freshman year for the most part. And maybe they all also had seminar, algebra seminars, so that, like, maybe tainted their homework, um, sense from eighth grade. But they actually had a sense that they had a more manageable homework workload in high school, which was sort of interesting. But again, it is, there's more freedom with it. And it's a matter maybe of all those life skills of figuring out how to do it. But still having kids have all their subjects each day, which is probably developmentally appropriate and important in middle school.
I'm curious also at middle school level, I should have asked Bethany this, a little man of one, that would be, I don't know how valuable it would be. But our, our guidance process as far as choosing classes for ninth grade. And again, back to the idea of knowing what's expected and, you know, in September saying, here's what you should be taking. How, how active are our guidance counselors in the, in the middle school level?
Very active. They actually meet with every single kid. In terms of choosing the classes, the teachers have to sign off to make sure that they're, that they're in the appropriate class. So there's, I would say, from what I see, it's very active.
I think that was my experience too. It was overwhelming to me as a parent, to be honest, to go to the high school with my oldest for that presentation of all the things they could possibly take. It felt like I was listening to a community college presentation on the book of options and opportunities. And she was just excited about, there was nothing overwhelming at all to her. And I don't think any of them have walked away feeling that. I think they get to the end of their eighth grade year. By and large, these kids, having had two years of people who know and care about them, really bringing them to a place that they're ready. It, it, I'm sure not everybody. But I, they're ready to be done. And, and you wanna respect and appreciate that that's a, I think, I'm guessing that's pretty universal right now.
You know, the, the, the paradox that awaits for all of us, um, I think, is that, you know, as we, as we move towards personal learning plans and that we really want kids' voice, we wanna make sure not as a, you know, dipstick that we make it through the year, but throughout the year, like what are my goals, what are my dreams, what are my aspirations? How does the course syllabus or this program of studies allow me to experience and, and the, the, the goals that I wanna achieve? And that's not what we have right now. It's, here's what I wanna do and here's what the cost course offerings are. So I think that this, this notion of personal learning plan started in seventh grade, I think has a potential of, of really challenging us to think differently about what are the learning opportunities that we wanna have kids available, avail to. Sophomore year, ugh, sophomore year, I've gotta get through my sophomore year. Why do you have to wait to be a senior to experience? Yeah, so I really hope that this notion of developing goals based on what your dreams are and when you sit down with a guidance counselor, yes, you have to look at the program of studies to see, to knock off here the Carnegie units that I need to graduate. But this whole notion of PLPs just turns that model upside down.
Yeah, she talked about the Arts Academy, she talked about STEM. And she talked about how. Right, she talked about how blah her sophomore year would be. You know, without this, so it'd be great with that.
I think, uh, one of the other things that I remember feeling initially, the first kid to go through, that, oh my gosh, it sounds all about what they wanna do. And I will say, she, I, I, I fully expect and hope that in the personal learning plan and being college and career-ready when they leave, they actually are allowed to, and I know that they certainly would be, but their plans will morph and change with their experiences and their curiosities. And so with, with that N being just career and college-ready, it sounds like you need to choose a profession sometimes. And I would caution that my senior applied undecided everywhere and is, you know, very excited to be headed to Boston College. And, and just this last semester, did an internship class where she shadowed her pediatrician and was, had been curious about that and thinks, well, I'm at least gonna set myself up so the courses I take could align me for something like that. And so she was honest as she was applying to schools and didn't know. And maybe with a personal learning plan, she would have had more curiosity around that rather than knocking stuff off early.
It also levels the playing field, because all kids will have, should have the opportunity to experience that. And we have a ton of work to do in that regard, but, you know, the idea is, is a grand one. And, and, but we've got a very traditional way of looking how we do school. And it really is, here's the program of studies. And I think the high school is very comprehensive and it does offer lots of pathways for kids. But for even, even that said, there's a percentage of kids who wouldn't, are not gonna benefit unless we do some things different. So anyway, um, thanks for engaging these, these, uh, great students. And, um, we'll continue to hopefully not struggle as much with how to engage the ninth grade graduating class. But, um, we have a commitment from the administration at EHS and I know ADL to continuing, trying to figure out on hearing their voice at this level. Because I think it's important that the board understand that what we do prepares them for this and their voice is important. So the next piece, um, um, I'm happy to have my principal colleagues here and Ellen here. This is a follow-up to our meeting in March, which was a time that we shared some end-of-winter two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year data. And we have a few slides to share with you tonight. There's no report. This is just Peter, Kevin and Joyce sharing with you some of their, some of the work that's been happening for Ellen to chime in. I, I first wanna recognize publicly for, you know, the boarding with RETN, that how much I appreciate Joyce being here this year. You've offered a great deal of leadership, have, um, compassion to the work. You've helped leadership grow in many ways. And the conversation she's gonna have with us tonight, I think is reflective of what you've brought to, to Founders, so thank you. So always, Peter gets to go first.
I go first.
I mean, Ellen's at the controls, although don't give him the controls.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure Ellen will be clicking from over there or something.
Okay, so I get to go first. So this is, uh, recall, we were, Mark invited us last time at the end of the winter assessment window. And now we're at the end of the spring assessment window. Um, you remember, this is our data wall and this, okay, what I wanna start, this is the data wall at the end of the winter assessment. I don't have a photograph currently because we haven't sat down to have that conversation with teachers yet. They've been doing a couple of other things, um, including report cards placing four hundred fifty children and so forth. So what I wanna start out with though is looking at this group here, which is our kindergarten class. Now you remember that these are the proficiency levels and this is all literacy. This is all English language arts. So this is proficiency level one. This is two, three and four. And again, these are our kindergartens.
The one in the middle, the middle strand?
The bottom strand. And because we, we, we lost one of our, so we put two of the kindergartners up here and then it drops down here.
Dropping student enrollment.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole new thing. So as you can see, at, at the end of the winter assessment, we had two students who were performing at a proficiency level one. This is, and this is all based on, uh, we use the DRA, the developmental reading assessment, as our, as our primary sort of stake in the ground. But we also use, uh, teachers, the input from teachers, from what they see in a day-to-day basis in the class, based on their formative assessments, which they are constantly doing, reading records that they're doing with children, their writing. We have a ground rule. We set, we set the ground rules a few years back in that, um, you can, we use the DRA as sort of the stake in the ground. You can, based on your experience in the classroom, move a child backwards in proficiency, but you cannot move them forwards. You can't leapfrog the DRA, but you can pull them back. So, um, so we had two children performing at one. We had in the spring, uh, at the end of the winter, we had, um, three. Uh, no, we had, here we had, uh, we had a slew of children in kindergarten performing at, at two. This is three, this is four. I'm gonna jump forward to show you the slide where we're at now. Uh, this is at the end of the spring assessment. We have zero children performing at a proficiency level one. We have three at a proficiency level two. Proficiency level three, as you, you might recall, I talked about it last time, that's the tricky one. It's based on text levels. DRA has text levels one, two, three, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-eight, thirty and so on. I did, I made that whole thing up. What, what we have found in, through extensive data analysis is that, so kids who, uh, read at a text level three or four are considered proficient for this year only. Next year, it's all moving up to four. But what we have found is that children who read at a text level three are, I think, four to five times more likely to not meet the standard in the winter of first grade. So these are the kids that we're looking at really, really closely. Those are the fifteen kids reading at a text level three. These are the thirty-one children reading at a text level four. These children are reading above standard. Those children, those are seventy-two kindergartners who are reading either at a text level six or above, um, which is, we're looking at, uh, in the winter for first grade, we're looking at an eight, twelve. So these kids are, these kids are well in their way. These kids are also, these are the ones we're watching. Um, and they're the ones that we will, we would end up having the discussion about at the needs assessment.
Peter, these reflect all children?
These reflect all children, yes. With a possible, well, there may be one or two kids who are not assessed based on their needs. I can tell you that of these fifteen children, um, uh, six of them are receiving tier-two instruction, uh, which is generally title one. And five of them are receiving, uh, tier-three instruction as well as their classroom instruction. So, so really the, the conversation that I will focus on with these, with the teachers of these kids when they reach first grade will really be centering on the, uh, four kids that aren't yet receiving any sort of services and what are we gonna do for them? And my belief is that those are kids that surfaced only at this round of assessments. Okay? Go back to first grade. This is the number of children who are performing at a, uh, proficiency one. This is the number at two. This is the number at three and this is the number at four. Remember, our first grade is enormous. I believe it's a hundred fifty-one today. Now, this number, this is a concerning number, um, obviously. And we'll jump forward to where we are now. Uh, where we had, um, twenty in the winter, we have twenty-one now. Of those twenty-one, fifteen of them are receiving tier-three instruction.
And tier-three is special education.
Right. And four of them are receiving tier-two instruction. So that leaves two kids that, and those are the ones that I, I need to sort of ferret out, who those children are and where did they go from the fall assessment to the winter to the spring. We have eleven, uh, performing at a, at a level two versus seven in the spring, uh, rather in the winter. Six of these children are receiving tier-two services, which means, which leaves the question, those other five, where are they? What, what sort of services do they need? Uh, this number has remained at fifty-four. Uh, that's what we had in. That's what we had in the winter. And this number was seventy, is now fifty-nine. So first grade is is always the challenge. It's the, um, and part of part of the way we're addressing that is by ink is by upping the levels that we're looking at in kindergarten. Um, and then exam, looking at the levels, what the expectations are in first grade, as well as, uh, working on curriculum content with Hillary Kissel, our, um, reading coach, our literacy coach is what Pam Chomsky Higgins through, uh, the Vermont Reads Initiative, working on, uh, tier one instruction, which is classroom instruction, and streamlining and making our tier two and three more effective. Second grade, if we go back to this, this number here, uh, second grade, um, performing a level one in the spring, uh, rather after the winter, was thirteen. Uh, what's important to note is, uh, that second grade class has a a large number of students with pretty extraordinary needs. So there were five children in that group there that were not assessed. They don't do the DRA. We want to make sure that that we have them on the wall, those who are not, you know, they're not forgotten. Here, um, we had, there's seven at a level two. And then you can see these, we switch to current numbers. This number again is, uh, not counting, we're not looking at those children who are not assessed. So we have four children, uh, who are performing at a proficiency one. Three of them receiving tier three services, one of them receiving, uh, one of them actually just moved in. At a at a proficiency level two, uh, we have fourteen children. We had seven in the winter. This is, uh, another new student, uh, is represented here. Seven of these children are receiving tier two services. Five of them are receiving tier three services. This number, uh, this was thirty-five, is now thirty-two. And this one was sixty-two, is now sixty-one. Um, I think it's important to remember that those proficient, those rates, the what the targets rise with each of these assessment windows. I think there's tremendous power in in our local assessment windows. It's it's three times a year that we take a really comprehensive look as a system at where we're at with each of our children. But I think it's also important to note the amount of formative assessment that goes on in classrooms on a routine basis. And it's that formative assessment coupled with this this assessment, this local assessment window that that really provides teachers with the information to adjust what they're doing in classroom. They can adjust it on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, as opposed to those kneecap scores, which are not only, they're they're a year removed from us. There's, you look at the kneecap scores and go, ah, as opposed to, oh, we need to be boom, boom, boom. Here, we're able to pinpoint individual children. Where are they at? What do they need? How do we get them there?
Can I ask just a question? Do we know in terms of the cohort, do we know? I'm looking at the kindergarten group and that first grade group seeming more challenged as they were kindergartners where they, I'm trying to recall, I don't recall this exact presentation last year. Had they been a cohort that's been struggling?
I I I know that, but I don't know it without the without my sheets in front of me.
No, I don't need numbers. I was just wondering because sometimes I fully understand that happens. And sometimes, sometimes there's a large class size and that
Right.
strains the system as well. And so I just didn't know.
They they are not, um, what's interesting is that these these numbers, this this first grade, these first grade numbers tend to show up year after year. That that winter assessment where we kind of go, ah. And we're we are in, we're sort of investigating, what are the causes of that? Beyond simply ratcheting up expectations at kindergarten. It's also, I think, when you when you start to look at these children here, these kids have sort of made it over the hump. They are, they're readers and they they begin reading. These kids are still struggling with that. They're just trying to figure out that code. So if what what I find really heartening is this number here and this number here. I see this year after year in data. It it varies from, you know, it may be fewer here and more here, but it's the same pattern year after year. And it is, it's it's the, it's getting over that hump and be and sort of becoming a reader. And those are the kids, you don't see the summer regression that you see in the other, in in these children here because they go home and they they go, oh, I think I'm going to read. And they pick up a book, as opposed to these children who rely on an adult to help them with that.
And then the only other question I had is, are we noticing, um, data to support the idea in kindergarten of kids coming more ready with more of them taking advantage of the preschool options available through the district? Are we beginning to see that play out in kindergarten?
I I I I would need to sit down and really sort of pull together the assessment data as well as enrollment data and all of that. But it's certainly, it's definitely worth looking at. Anecdotally, I would say that that I I think every year we're seeing, I think we're seeing stronger groups, stronger, uh, larger groups of strong children that are coming through.
I'll show you some kindergarten reading data next fall. We have some longitudinal data now. It's qualit, it's qualitative. It's, um, but I think with with the passage of universal preschool, we have to come up. I know the state's going to be interested in what that metric looks like in terms of, is this investment working? And I think anecdotally, we can say it is.
And I think the state got raised to the top dollars for preschool
That's right.
in that grant to harness that data, as a matter of fact.
Thirty-nine million dollars.
That, um, system will be coming and, you know, we'll need to be prepared to provide data for that.
That's right. That's right.
The other thing I wanted to add in is that this year, for the first time, we're able to use our title one money to, um, put together a summer school for kids. Um, and so the kids that Peter has on his chart were invited to come to summer school. And we have two classes of one, two that will be happening, um, taught by our teachers. And then we also have a class for three, four, and a class for five, six. So we had a really nice, um, response rate. But it was aimed at the kids who you would consider nearly achievers, the kids who are not, um, tier three special ed, but more the kids that are close to the cusp. That's what title one is about. Um, so it's giving them an extra four weeks of instruction. And we we are kind of committed to having the kids be there for the four weeks.
So I was having some lunch with third graders today and asking around the table, you know, what are you doing for summer? And this kid next to me, Devin, said, well, I'm going to summer school. Kid next to me said, summer school? Why are you going to summer school? I said, I want to.
So it was great. Way to go, Devin.
How much did you, how many cookies did you give me?
Thanks, Peter.
I I just, I was, this is, this is great. Because I know last year we were all very kind of frustrated with with some of the data and the quizzes. This felt was very clear. And I appreciate your explanation, a little of the, you know, without going into great depth, the idea of it's DRA. And you might get pulled back a little, but you're not going to get pushed forward. It's it's a really good explanation. What I would love is this exact same presentation next year with this exact same chart and bring this page back so that we can kind of go, okay, here's where they were, but we moved them down one.
Yeah.
Did we?
So a cohort.
Yeah, exactly.
The cohort information.
Did that zero, three, forty-six, seventy-two become ten, fifteen, whatever, whatever? You know, that pattern that you you say, I think that'll be.
Yeah, I did that.
Those those children in kindergarten, those those text level three children at kindergarten right now, what we're doing is identifying them and working to prevent them from becoming
The two.
those kids in first grade.
Right.
Except that when we make the switch to four.
Yes.
Next year, there will be threes going into a four.
Potentially some transportation. So.
Now we'll look at Founders. You've seen the data wall before. This says March data wall, but I wanted, oops, I want to just, which one is it? This one? Okay. The first, uh, first I want to show you, this first row is third grade, first trimester, second, uh, for third grade, second trimester, and third grade, uh, third trimester. The difference between my wall is I wanted to see progression visually through the year. The other difference is in the top two for third grade, I put a hundred percent of the students in there. So when you're looking at the third grade, first semester, every kid's there. Third grade, second semester, every kid's there. But the third grade, third semester are only the kids who are ones and twos. We use the DRA, um, as our stopping point. So when you look at it, there's my third grade data. In the fall, those thirteen ones and thirty-eight twos in the spring, based on DRA only, are twelve ones, twelve twos, seventeen threes, and nine fours. The twelve and twelve, uh, the twelve here are tier three students. This is, um, about half are tier three and the other half are getting tier two services. These seventeen and nine have received, um, student, uh, teachers look at the assessment data. They adjust their teaching. The special educator works with them to provide the programming, and that's the result. And that I want to celebrate because that is amazing to me. I'm going to go back now and we'll look at fourth grade. So in the middle of that chart, I'm I'm sorry about my, I took a terrible picture. This is fourth grade, first trimester, fourth grade, second trimester, ones and twos in the third trimester. The fourth grade class was the one we started the year saying that we were really concerned about. There was a ton of kids who were ones and twos. And we weren't quite sure if it was just a cohort of kids, if they needed another year to to mature. So looking at the data, working between teachers and special educators, this is what we came up with. There were twenty-two in the fall as level two and thirty-three as level three. Now, that's fifty-eight kids out of like a hundred and thirty. That's a lot of students. Look where they are now. Based on the DRA, four in level one, fifteen in level two, thirty-three costs align into level three and three into level, um, four. The interesting thing, and somebody pointed it out to me because I hadn't even been looking at it, some of our kids jumped two levels. They jumped from one to a three or from two to four. And that's an incredible amount of growth. And that is the hard work of teachers. It's the expanding of the curriculum. It's the honing in on kids and what do kids need in the class. It's building up our MTSS, um, team strategy plans that teachers visit.
Jargon buster, MPSS.
Multi-tiered system of support, which is the tier one, two, three. At tier one, we identify those students at every three to four weeks at team meetings of who's not making it and who needs extra, who needs to come to math lab, who goes to lick lab, who has title, who needs extra stuff in the classroom. Those are the kids are identified and they receive this team strategy plan. If that doesn't work, then they they fall into the EST, the educational support system. Um, it's educational support teammates, and we determine further servicing. And if all else fails, we go to special education. Now I'm going to go back to fifth grade, oops, to fifth grade. There again, fifth grade, first trimester, fifth grade, second trimester, fifth grade, third trimester, all based on the DRA only. I didn't use report card. I didn't triangulate with anything. It's only the DRA testing. And there you go. We had eighteen in the fall as level one, twenty-three as level two. And now we have ten level ones, all IEP stuff, all tier three kids, six level twos who are also IEP students. And then twenty-three are in level three and two are in level four. So I just really want to celebrate the hard work of not only Edmund, um, Edmonds, Essex Elementary in preparing our kids to come up into Founders. And then the Founders teachers just putting their nose to the grind and pulling kids up. And that's pretty exciting data. It's not a hundred percent, but let's be realistic, all of the students who are there, who are in the ones and twos are in services.
And probably making progress.
And making prog, big progress. Are if 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 you could have seen it better, even students who were level one might have been a zero or one on this side. And now they're either in the middle or pushing toward that level two. So really amazing.
Did you have new students to the district in level one and twos?
Uh, yes, in all three grades. Uh, there was a huge bunch that came in in fifth grade. I would say of those eighteen, six of those were brand new students to our school in level one.
What about the ten progressing to spring?
I thought I would be lying if I told you I I looked at those kids specifically. I was really more interested in looking at how the kids have progressed.
Thank you.
All right, since we're celebrating, we shall celebrate a little bit more. When I came here in, uh, in March, if you remember, I I showed you some data walls that were all grade based. And that's what these are. So here's your As, Bs, Cs, and Bs. Went back over the next, uh, three weeks probably, and we started having conversations as a staff. I would pull in a team, and that's what this is over here. And I would say to a team, uh, we we didn't really have a data per se, DRAs, whatever. But but what I have, in terms of their professional judgment, where are these kids currently if we were to look at a four, three, two, one proficient model? Uh, knowing that that's the direction that we're that we're moving towards. And you can s, up here, what, again, these yellow ones are girls, the green ones are boys. And what I see up here is a lot of girls. I see primarily girls. I see a, uh, bunch of kids that know how to play school up here. Over here, those are my fours. And I now have fifty-fifty boys and girls. And what was very obvious when we're having this conversation with the staff is that literally it was two thirds of the As were girls. One third were boys. When you do it proficient wise, fifty-fifty distinguished.
They have a sense of why, is it?
Uh, I do. I think girls sit. I think girls do their homework. I think girls know how to play school a little better than than boys. Uh, the grades that we give, uh, many of the grades on team, our, uh, homework plays a part in it. So if you don't do that, you're going to score less. This over here doesn't necessarily take into account the homework. It takes into account how are you doing in the area of language arts.
Against the standard.
It's just, right, against the standard. Okay? So you can see four, three, two, one. Uh, all those dots all mean something. They actually, you can't tell from here, green, blue, whatever the colors are. But they really, if they're green, then they are a free and reduced population. And what's exciting about this, and you really can't see it, one of the, actually, I talked about it last time, but it's exciting to me is that the sixth grade has a lot of, uh, twos and ones that had green dots in the area of language arts. A lot of the language development wasn't there. And by the time they ended, or by the time they're in eighth grade, a lot of those were threes and fours. And I think I I give tons of credit and will celebrate those teachers that certainly in the in language arts area that they really promote reading and they promote vocabulary, uh, and that deeper thinking which helps out over there. Anyway, so the conversation has been moving from A, B, C, D to more of a one, two, three, four. This is another team here, one, two, three, four. It's a different group of children. But anyways, uh, or four, three, two, one, four, three, two, one, four, three, two, one. The, like I said, up here, it's been eye opening for us to, as we move closer to that proficient base, standard based reporting. We have a meeting coming up in the beginning of August where we're having a really strong conversation about what that's going to look like, uh, here at Essex Middle School. And so those conversations about what we're offering to students who are struggling, oops, other way, sorry. If, when we had these conversations, these students here were the students that are receiving our intervention. These are the students that are receiving, uh, we, every day we have a half hour block of time. Those are the students that are getting an extra dose of something. There's an email that went out today, uh, as we're putting schedules together for seventh and eighth graders. One of the students that that are going to be in Larry's class going to be in Larry's class, his reading class, for the next couple of years as opposed to taking a foreign language? So we can give them an extra dose. A lot of those are sitting right up in this area here. Uh, also with Larry, and in terms of math, this isn't a math class, but the, is that he actually takes these kids right here in sixth grade on to the team and extends the learning of those kids. He actually does a, uh, he takes what's happening in class and, and maybe gives them another problem, maybe goes a little deeper, makes them think a little harder. And that's what this is here. So each team in a dimension of time built in their schedule addresses those students, uh, and it's also extended the pro, the, for those students who are above. It's been a, it's been great. The conversations have been pretty amazing. Uh, one of the, when we just finished up this last group, I had, uh, a few teachers that would like me to put this together for their incoming class. So they're, they're going to have their, their class or their team, and I'll be able to take where they are currently and put them all up there so that they'll have it to start off the school year versus having it or, or waiting until October, November.
So you can come Joyce and get the current, current fifth graders.
Six, yeah.
You could go to Peter and get the current second graders and.
Exactly.
Continue.
Yep.
And the other thing that we did last year, because my fifth graders knew they had put a whole lot of time and energy into those kids, which you do every year, but they wanted to see how the sixth graders did. So in October, I pulled down the sixth grade scores to show the fifth graders. And, I mean, it's, it's just a great way to know, gee, I'm, I'm attending those P L Cs, I'm writing those interim assessments, then, and when it comes, when push comes to shove, and we need to do these more standardized assessments, our kids are making it. And that's, that's what really is fulfilling, um, regardless of what the level of a student is. When you can see that growth and you can see they sustain the growth. And I commend the district for instituting the number of different summer schools they're doing this year because you will see a whole lot less regression when the kids have an opportunity for four weeks in the summer to, to keep learning going.
John, I wonder if you can talk about, you know, with this transition from a report card-based way of measuring progress to proficiency. I mean, that is a, a fairly profound move, uh, because I think I heard you use the word judgment on the part of teachers and maybe using variables like homework, which we know, my opinion is it doesn't really contribute to a child's learning as much as them learning how to manage their time. Uh, that's just my bias, but, um, I wonder if you could talk a little about where, where your faculty is developmentally in terms of their readiness to, to, because what you, what we have K five is more of a culture of, you know, we have, Peter mentioned local assessments really important because we're, we're adjusting instruction regularly. And when they get to middle school, the, the, the belief is that they should be already knowing how to run, you know, to, to read and to write. So we may not have to be as focused on those critical skills at that stage of the game. So the familiarity with that type of data are not as, they're not as familiar using those type of data as they are in K five. So what are, what's the metrics that you've been talking about? How do you, when you sit and they look at data in sixth grade, what are they looking at to determine where they are, four, three, two, one?
Well, I just want to talk quickly about the D R A piece. And Ellen has actually, one of the things that we, we have talked about as a staff is that we, for whatever reason, at the middle school, we, we, we give, we assess using the D R A, but I don't think we really know all that it can actually tell us. Uh, and we've, and through the conversations of looking at this data, it's led teachers to asking questions. What else can I learn from this? So Ellen and I actually, I think it was just this week, or, well, not, this is only, I guess we're only on Monday. It feels like Friday. So it was just, it was just last week that we're having a conversation about providing more P D, professional development for these teachers so that they can look at these and use these assessments in a much more meaningful way. So yes, in terms of the, uh, let's see, want to, do you want to add something?
No, I was just going to say the middle school presents a difficulty in that you have one language arts teacher and fifty students. So when you do a test like D R A, it's time intensive in a regular twenty-person classroom, but put it with fifty or seventy-five kids and one person doing it. So there have been different workarounds. They've been doing it.
Right.
But the classroom teacher hasn't always been getting the information. So we need to, to really bolster that understanding. And we did a whole lot of work with the language arts committee and Johnson and, and I guess, well, I'm not supposed to say names, but a certain.
Just don't say Allison, maybe.
Okay, two, no, it wasn't, okay, well, that would be, but anyway. They just came to these huge ahas in the middle of it all and just said, oh, my God, you know, like, this shows me this. And so it was just a really nice moment, um, so.
It was great. In terms of our readiness for, for, uh, standard-based reporting or proficiency-based reporting, we're going to have to be ready. Uh, we're doing some work. Uh, the sixth grade in particular, uh, some have gone to conferences, some are involved in a work in a, was it three, three, three or four session? Uh, and it's actually, what's interesting is, uh, is that this person's was actually, Kim, when we met maybe six years ago in the library around looking at report cards, if you remember that?
Yeah.
And it was overwhelming.
Been there a few times.
It was, but it was, it was overwhelming that people didn't want to change. They wanted to leave it. We really need grades. This is what parents know. This is how, we just, we don't care about anything. We just want this. And this teacher was actually there who was a real strong advocate of leave it the way it is, grades, 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 grades. And I, his formative goal this year was to look at grading versus looking at performance-based assessment. And his reflection that he just gave me last week was profound. He has completely changed his entire way of thinking. And I think that came with a lot of, uh, professional development and seeing the, the beauty and the, and the worth in looking at that way. So, uh, answer your question mark, we're, we're not all ready, but we are working more and more towards it.
And we have a sense that the high school's ready for us, or, uh, because as a parent.
Ready for us.
Yeah, they ready, are, are we going to get the right recommendations? I would trust the teachers that have been with the kids for two years to recommend their placement. I would presume that that recommendation, whether it's based on grades or proficiency.
Right.
Is going to reflect whatever the appropriate placement would be for the student moving on to the high school, presuming high school remains grades.
Mm-hmm. High school is remaining to grades, yet they're moving to proficiency-based. Matter of fact, it was just last week Rob asked for, what's that?
They have to.
They do.
The whole state.
Rob just asked Marcy, myself, and Lori for, uh, where we're at with our, with our standard-based report card.
Marcy's Westford.
What's that?
Marcy's in Westford.
In Westford. Uh, and send them to him so he could see what they look like. I mean, so there, uh, from what I gather from that is using all three to create one for Essex High School that will see us.
High school accreditation laws. And so they have to, all high schools have to move to proficiency-based reporting. And so different high schools are in different places in that. The junction is not as far along as some other places. If you were to go out to say C V U's website, and I know you've been out there a lot, Kevin, they, they have a huge piece finished. Milton High School has a whole piece finished too, where they're centered around rubrics and what it means to be, a lot of the habits of mind, some of the, our ends policies would show up very clearly in there. The other piece that we have in common is that next year's seventh and ninth grade have to put P L Ps into place. So that's going to be a game changer or shifter, and it'll, so there'll be some shifting.
Yeah, we can still have grades. The, the big idea is it's got to be proficiency-based. There's going to be an outcome that's, that's consistent across.
So.
Well, I, I have one observation and one question that literally just popped into my mind, and I'm already contemplating all the possible consequences of it. But my observation, as we've been talking in for years about this sort of a district, not three schools, and even though your board is a little different from your board, which is a little different, it, there's a, there is a neat consistency now. It is starting to become, and, and that's really pretty cool. Um, and I think the most important consistency is this consistently getting better, which is really cool.
Well, we also, Dan, I think what helps with that is our professional learning communities.
Yeah.
That's, that's first thing keen to my head.
Yeah, you know, because I've been thinking about it ever since one of our ninth grade guests talked about, you know, who you had sort of could determine what you learned. And I think that existed to a much greater percentage. Three, five years ago.
I was going to say, even as early as three years.
Yeah. I think now, you know, we have, we've been working on curriculum frameworks, we've been working in our professional learning communities. Teachers are making decisions as grade-level teams. This is the unit we're going to teach now. This is how long we're going to be teaching it. It doesn't mean that everybody is teaching the exact same thing at the exact same time and the exact same day in the exact same way, but they are all working within the same unit and they're all working towards a common goal, which they then use a common formative assessment to see who's made it and who hasn't, as well as those little assessments all along the way so that they can tweak their teaching. That's radically different than it was. Uh, it, it was nothing like that when, when I arrived in, in Essex Town. And in the last three years, it's just accelerated tremendously.
And she, and I, I, what I was going to say is, I was naive to think that certain classes were getting more of an, an emphasis on language arts or, or an emphasis on mathematics. When she said that tonight, I said in my head, oh, wait a minute. You know, I know what we're doing in mathematics in third grade, and I know what we're doing in literacy in fourth grade. And it was really kind of, Joyce stepped back. This is prior to all the Common Core work that happened. Because really, it is, what you're passionate about is what you want to teach. There isn't any, there isn't any choice anymore. It's not what you want to teach, it's what you have to teach for kids to be successful. And that is a huge shift in, um, teachers really going to one another and saying, gee, I've never taught multiplication of fractions, you know, how do you do it? You know, how do you do it? How do you do it? And then coming back together and saying, okay, which one, which way was the most useful for my particular group of students? So that, that type of conversation happens.
And using that formative assessment, a common format so that they're all using the same assessment tool. And then saying, you know, holy cow, your kids, you know, they started here and now they're, what did you do? Because that's what I want to be doing in my, next time, or I want to do it for my kids who didn't get it this time. And the next time we teach this unit, I'm doing it that way. And, and so you have, you know, you look at these different assessments, and it's not always the same class that's scoring the highest on those, somebody else. And so the professional development that goes on just in those team meetings is huge.
Anecdotally, when I was doing my, my formative conferences with my teachers this year, one veteran teacher was in my office, and she says, I've never been as passionate or excited to be in my classroom as I am right now. And I looked at her and I said, what? And she said, no, she says, I am now learning again. And it's exciting to learn because the more I learn, the more aware of the fact that, of, of the concepts that I'm teaching kids and delivering forward. And it's not that she was a poor or mediocre teacher, it's just that it's a whole different level than what it was when I was a teacher.
I also think having Hillary working across all three of us, I think that's been, Eric Kessel, who's our literacy coach, has been just invaluable. And she has taken some teachers who, veteran teachers who are, who are very good teachers, but really had, had them focus on being very intentional in what they're teaching and how they're teaching it. It's just been, it's been amazing to watch the growth. And, and the same thing, Joyce, these teachers want to be in the classroom because they're watching these kids, eyes, eyes light up, they're excited about what's happening. And again, I think that having that K eight, having her K eight, it's just been fantastic.
Dan, you had a follow-up question.
Yeah, not my question, which, like I said, I, I even, I, well, I'll just ask it. In any way is this data, is this information shared with the kids? Obviously not specifically. Oh, Johnny's having trouble and, yeah, Joey's kicking butt.
Our kids, our kids know what reading level they're at, where they were, every time they move a level. They are very aware of that. Do they know where they are in conjunction to the one, two, three, four and their classmates? No. Um, and if they do, I, I don't know about it, to be perfectly honest. But they know where they are.
I stopped a child in the pod, uh, towards the end of last week, and I said, uh, I, I really kind of startled him because I said, you were a level twelve in the winter and you're reading in an eighteen now? And he went.
Creepy principle.
Yeah. And it was just, it was, it was, it was a child, the numbers just sort of jumped out at me. And, and, you know, because that's a huge, it's just a huge game.
Hopefully we, what we want to get is at their attributes about their reading versus just the numbers.
Right, yes.
So in Peter's school, every single student, I think in your school has an electronic portfolio right now, kind of keeping track of what they're doing as a student. So I think there is a lot of reflection going on. And I know at your school too, um, Joyce, there's a lot of times where kids are sitting down and kind of reevaluating and kind of saying, because the big picture for me would be, how do I feel about myself as a reader? Have I grown, um, as a reader? And you might know that by a level, I hope not, but you'd rather know if I, what you're reading and what you're interested in, how much you read.
I think if you ask me that, if you ask me that same question in two years, the answer will have to be yes. Because with the P L Ps coming, they're invested and they're right there.
Dan, I think it's an, it's a great, it's a really important question to ask. And when, if you remember back in the fall, we showed some synthesis of John Hattie's work. And the number one instructional practice that gets the most votes, has the most impact on learning is kids knowing where they are compared to the standard. And it's not only where the standard is, where, in what, where I am, but also understanding as a learner, what do I need to do differently to get better at meeting that standard? And that, that is such a critical feature of our teaching, that we don't keep these data private. You know, we need to put up, here's the standard and this is where you are. And you need, they need to understand that. So I really appreciate the question. It's important.
You know, I also think, Dan, anecdotally, I think about walking around at the celebration of learning that we had recently and listening to kids talking with their parents. And I sat with a lot of kids whose parents weren't able to make it, and they were very reflective. By and large, they were very much, well, this is what I was doing, you know, three months ago, and this is, this is where I am with that, with that particular type of work now. And I learned this, I learned this, 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 and that's what brought me here. And I think, you know, I'd like, today I was in, uh, three kindergarten classrooms for their, uh, water is wonderful celebration. And looking at various writing samples from kids that were, that just were astounding.
But see, kids just don't, you have to be, you have to teach that way.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's a way that you teach, recognizing that kids need to be.
It's not surprising that Melanie's kids came in tonight and read the pieces they read. I mean, that is a result of a whole lot of investment in, in, in kids investing in what they're doing.
So thanks to all three of you for your educational leadership coming out tonight. Drive safely. Um, thanks for a great year of service, Ellen as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good summer.
Yeah.
See you again soon, I'm sure.
See you tomorrow.
Last year, Dan, now, I don't know.
Three times in like a week.
Oh, boy.
All right. See y'all.
Good night. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Because mine disappeared underneath.
Wow, we're really flow stones. Good.
It looks like we've gotten through everything. And we, I just wanted to touch base. We have our date. I think we have our timed, I'm trying to think if I put the time with it, for our retreat. I wanted to check back with you guys and just make sure that is still our date. And I don't know that we ate, we put in a placeholder for eight to three. That sounds a little long, so we might, if you're comfortable with Mark and I when we get the draft agenda, to share with you, giving it maybe a tighter timeframe if you're willing to go the eight to three terrific. Understand that we're going to do our best to not necessarily have us there for seven hours.
That's just a point, yeah.
Does that sound reasonable? That was sort of our placeholder. We did have a lot that we wanted to cover. I have not sat down with Mark for us to try and put structure to what we were looking at. Nothing has changed in what we had put as our hit list of, of priorities. And I know Mark and I will get to do that, and anytime after next week. And what I wanted to touch base on, because we had mentioned the possibility that there might be some homework or some divvying up of things in advance, and being respectful of people's time and break in the summer, I was hoping maybe I could just ask that once a week, if not more often, people check the E T S D emails. Um, I have it come into my phone, so I see it come in when I think to check any emails. I see them all. Um, but just so that I know that if I put something out there that's a couple of weeks off, not necessarily requiring action, but more even F Y Is, if, if that's comfortable for everybody to, to think to do that, that would be, I'd appreciate it. And I think I probably also have everybody's text numbers. So worst case, if there's something urgent that marker I need, we can do that as well. But just as a plan for the summer, and then anything that we think requires, um, reading or prep or divvying up, um, of responsibilities, like I said, I, I expect Mark and I can probably put more form to it in the next couple of weeks, if that is okay with you, Mark, um, so that that can get out just as soon as possible. I'm not expecting us to need to do a ton, but, um, in case there is some, I want to give everybody ample time. Summers are for family and fun and still busy with other things. Summers are for family and fun and still busy with other things, I'm sure. So I'll do my best to make sure that we're respectful of all of that. And I appreciate you guys doing your best to check in once a week just to see what else might have floated out there in that time, so. And then I don't have anything else on the agenda for the retreat unless anybody else has any other questions or things you've thought of that we need to plop onto that, just so that we make sure it's a full seven hours.
Make sure it's a full.
Yeah, no, no. A bit facetiously, I, you know, not our ideal, but I know we had an ambitious schedule and a lot of priorities, so. Well, like I said, we'll do our best. And nothing else that you guys have come up with in the meantime, no.
We do, we'll email.
Good, no, actually, perfect, email, that would, that's perfect. And the other thing with the retirement celebration tomorrow afternoon, and I know Rachel is traveling tomorrow, and I'm not sure, I haven't heard from Cashell to know if she's back for tomorrow. I am really hoping for the help of you gentlemen to, thank you, David. So it's three thirty to, we're usually done by four thirty.
And did you expect us here at eight o'clock?
No, I told Lorna I'm gonna shoot for two thirty.
Be there at three thirty.
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
If, if you're available to help, David, or anywhere between two thirty and let's say maybe three fifteen, okay? And you know what, Lorna is not available to stay after, so I will most certainly look forward to helping clean up.
We'll, we'll have a crew there.
Okay, cleanup crew.
I unfortunately can make it at ten, at ten to six. I'm pretty useless, I'm sorry.
Okay, so David and I then will represent us well. And if Cashell's in town, I may shoot her a text just to see if she's back as a reminder, if it works out. So David, if you're available, that'd be terrific. And I look forward to a nice celebration tomorrow. And I think I recall that Joyce may not be able to be there.
She's gonna pick up her daughter, flying from Italy, she's in Montreal.
Yeah, yeah.
She will be recognized tomorrow, albeit off of the agenda, but.
Yeah, and I have, I'll get to do opening or welcome remarks briefly. And we have nice parting gifts, if you will, to honor the teachers and so will the PTO. And so we have teachers and guidance counselors retiring. And I have thank you slash retirement cards that I will present on behalf of the board as well. So thank you for trusting me with that responsibility of getting those together for tomorrow.
Thank you for taking the responsibility.
It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful time to celebrate because the ones retiring this year have been with the school district for many years. And so it's a wonderful time to recognize them and I'm sorry I'm gonna miss it. Haven't missed it in five years.
I know, we've been a team even when you didn't have to do this as a board member. But I know Kathy will pick up the torch on behalf of the PTO and.
And it's a wonderful event, so I, you know, I've just honored that. They've been such a great part of the team, so.
Yeah, we're lucky. And we've got some kids coming to share in the celebration and it's just, I look, I always look forward to it. It's such a busy time of year and I know it's hard for folks to get out, but we're losing some very experienced, amazing educators and counselors. And there'll be big shoes to fill and I have full faith in us being able to do that, but they will be missed, so. I am done, we are ahead of schedule. Oh, let us take a quick minute to do our informal evaluation of meeting process. I'm gonna take notes and we can just go on your thoughts on it. And I promise that that is on our agenda, that we will look at process so that we are capturing it in a more structured way, if you will, so we can use it in looking at our practice, so. What do we think about the meeting, folks?
I totally enjoyed it.
Me too.
Yeah, this is the most fun meeting of the year.
Student voice, right?
Yeah.
And I thought the presentations, the principal presentations were great this year. It was wonderful, both students and teachers, I think the young kids was neat. I don't think we've ever had kids that young.
Yeah, it's amazing because of my, if I may, Kim, just.
No, definitely, Mike.
Several times, not to, not to choreograph this, but just interested in their learning. They're so lucid, so engaging, so like, and they get here and they're like, you know, Melanie was doing a really nice job prompting them, but they didn't need any prompting when they were with me, you know, Andrews, we need a salad bar.
Well, you could hear it in their voice and their letters, they were competent and strong and well thought through and.
And when, when you think about the message they passed, because my fifth graders come home and told me about the third graders and wanting the salad bar and her being like, they should have it, they should have had it, this should, you know, so even seeing, like, knowing anecdotally that that message is getting around and their enthusiasm, their enthusiasm is contagious to the other students and that was fascinating, so.
Yeah, they must, I hope they left feeling proud. I don't know if they knew before that there would be a salad bar, but I hope they could share some ownership and pride in accomplishing that.
Darn right.
I, I'm so excited for them, like, you could almost sort of see, I didn't think they knew.
They didn't.
And that had to have just felt awesome. So I'm sure Melanie will celebrate that with her class tomorrow.
Yeah. And then, I would just say, and you kind of already said it, as far as the, the ninth graders somehow getting that more structured. They, they were great, both of them were great.
Yeah, it fell flat this year.
It's, it's a challenge roping in high school students.
I know.
Especially this time of year with finals, so maybe that's something to just think about, the timing.
Yeah, do this in May, I mean, how different would the response be if we did this a month earlier?
I wonder.
Probably not much.
A month earlier or even potentially in the fall when they, I, they might lose what they remembered of their eighth to ninth transition if we wait till the fall, or they might have a different perspective because there's a little more space from the full ninth grade experience. But I, I would imagine that this week is especially challenging for kids. And we always have that challenge in that, I think Memorial Day is often, maybe it wasn't this time, but Memorial Day is often, we miss the May meeting at the end because of Memorial Day. So maybe we move the last June meeting to the first week in June because we do lose that last May meeting. And I think earlier in May, you're really in the thick of extracurricular, you know, it, it, it's hard to find a time that you're not gonna end up with kids awfully busy.
These are the days that I just wish I had access to freshmen, you know, I'm just sort of like, you know, I'd like to be able to sit down, a hundred and fifty EMS kids who are now friends, say, you know, here's your opportunity. I mean, it's that personal connection. Again, it's, it's challenging the way we operate, you know.
Well, I was thinking about the advisory is a once a week thing at, or once every other week thing, I think, at the high school. And that might be an avenue, it'd be an avenue especially if they were asking all grades to reflect on their previous experience in coming in. We might give ninth graders a slightly different survey than the others, but those advisories are deliberately a cross section of grades. So you might get less buy-in with the advisory leading one of those classes to spend fifteen minutes on it.
Well, it gets back to Dan's good question and, and it was done, I was told, through the advisory time. But it's, is my voice worth anything? It's like, do, does my input matter? Do you share these data? Do you, do you circle back, ninth graders back with teachers, with administration, say, this is what you said your readiness was? What are, and some of it, you were ready in some areas, you were not, so what do we do differently as a community to help? I mean, if it were more, if it was used in a different way, I think it would be, there might be more buy-in to actually participating. But so I think it's a cultural shift too, you know.
Well, you know, I also wonder, you know, when you think about student voice, are they more comfortable if it came from maybe one of the teachers? Who would they, I, I'm just thinking student voice, like, some students, like, the kids are obviously more comfortable with Melanie, with, you know, having that different environment, and I don't know if maybe that makes it.
Well, we're gonna continue to not, you know, we're still full steam ahead, we'll figure it out, you know, it takes time.
Can we just send Kevin up to the high school?
Well, I'm wondering, like, you know, if they've had their teachers for two years, they do have a connection with them. And I loved hearing, and I've heard it from Larry Lash personally before, where he said, I checked on how the kids are doing when they get to the high school. I mean, he, he really is curious how his kids going in from Alver Seminar to the high school math program are faring. And I heard, I think Joyce saying that she had borrowed, taken stuff from the sixth grade to, because the fifth grade teachers were curious. I love, we are desperately looking for our students to be curious learners. And that type of modeling of curiosity around achievement when it's beyond what you are responsible for for this year is motivated only by their passion for educating kids. It's really, I love to think that that is the way, the curiosity everybody has around how are all these kids doing? Not just this year, well, I've got them, but are they ready for the next thing? So it seems like a very natural curiosity. We are having that curiosity and asking for that feedback. I'm wondering if maybe kids would be more responsive to their team teachers from the previous year? If it, maybe a note from them that covers it or an email distribution or something, I don't know. I'm sure that, I'll ask my ninth grader.
And I'll ask my eighth grader.
So it sounds like the meeting, the meeting.
Yeah, I think so, and we stayed relatively close to on time. And I apologize for the parts that were, tended to be a little more structured that I didn't get to and I don't have a whole lot more to give you on the agenda just yet for the summer. But we'll have a tool that will help us capture how we're doing in meeting process. And I'm glad that this worked for everybody tonight, it certainly did for me too. Thanks, Mark, thank you to your team too.
Big bow.
I'll, I'll see you, but have a nice summer.
Yes.
The office is open, stop by any time.
You say that now, until we did, no.
Exactly, exactly. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all of us in favor? Aye.